We have a very national education association. We have over six hundred members and every one of those members is a CPS employee. And students are at the center of everything we do. So therefore, evenings like tonight are really important to us. Because we have the opportunity to elect the people that are going to make the decisions that affect what happens to us, and more importantly, what happens to our kids. And so we're really grateful you're here tonight to be able to answer questions about your vision for the district. More importantly, we're really grateful you're willing to volunteer your time for something that we are all so passionate about. Before we hear from them, however, I want to make sure we thank the people that got to my together. So we have a screening team, we have a forum team. If you are somebody who helped make tonight happen or helped with our screening, I hope you all stand up and be recognized. And so it really helps having a lot of people chip in on these things, all under the guidance of our great Monica Miller, who we are so fortunate to have. Not only does Monica put a lot of time and energy into this work, she brings so much wisdom, so much knowledge about the experience that happens with people. So I am going to turn it over to our moderator. Hi, my name is Courtney Gonzalez. I want to welcome you guys to the Columbia Missouri National Education Association's annual school board candidate forum. I am a member of C M N E A and I'm also a math teacher at Hickman High School. So we thank you guys for coming this evening to learn about candidates who wish to represent us on the public school board. Tonight, we have four candidates seeking one of three seats on the board. Their term will be for three years. We hope that by the end of the time with us, you have a better understanding about the hard concerns with educators, the concerns we have for our students, and about the job that we love. We also hope you have a better idea of how this year candidates would represent you on the board should they be elected. So before the forums begin, our candidates pull the number to decide the speaking order. Each time a question is asked, the candidates will rotate their speaking order so that each candidate shall have the opportunity to speak first. With that said, we will begin with our first candidate's opening statement, which will be Mr. Horn. Each candidate will have one minute. So we'll begin with the next one. It'll be timed for a little bit longer.
So for the opening statement, the question was, tell the voter something unique or something unique about you that the voter might not know, or why you need to care. You know, most people that know me and anybody that checks out my material online know that I've worked for federal law enforcement. That's not unique. What's unique is why is that? When I arrived at my duty station, I was excited, I was passionate about the work that I had been down to do. But I quickly realized that there was a vibe, that Latin heavy, Latin music. And I realized that in order to be, you know, compromise my court, I was just something that I was really, really. It wasn't that I was running for some situation that was hard, it was because I literally had no hope. And so, at that time, my faith was not as strong as it used to be. And so that's why I'm sitting right here today. And that's what I bring to the board, a really strong faith, and a really strong core value. And that's what guides the decisions that I'm making, hopefully, going to happen to all of our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Next is Mr. Sessions. And please make sure you project your voice.
I have an outdoor voice. You all right tonight? I'm Jonathan Sessions. I've been on the board for ten years now, and this is always the first question of this forum, so I'm running out of unique things to share about myself. One thing that I find in my professional life that folks don't realize is my degree's actually in education. I chose not to pursue that, actually while I went at the university, I completed that degree. But I started an IT company while I was in college, and that grew to a place, I thought it was just going to help me pay bills while I was there, and it just grew to a place that I could, that I made a big choice in my career path, that I didn't expect. So it is that little unique thing that I've now shared four times. Are you going to share the same thing you want to share?
No.
Ah, you don't want to know. But that's the only thing about me. But I'm, most importantly, even though I've been doing this for ten years, I'm not bored by it, I'm still excited by it. I still want to continue to work hard to serve the teachers and the citizens of Columbia Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Sessions. Next is Mr. Seaman.
My name is David Seaman. I was going to tell a unique story, but after speaking with Helen, it didn't seem like it was me to say anything. I attended four different school visits in the four states. When I arrived at Lockwood in two thousand and two, it was my final stop in the roots. Blessing in the sky, I had great teachers, people that I can remember, people like Jane Peaster and Neil Blackburn, Justin Conner. They are the reason why I'm able to sit in this seat and run toward school. They were great educators. Now that I have children in public schools, I see the same thing. Women like Bessa Hopkins and Stephanie Jackson, they are imparting that, giving those same opportunities to my children that I had when I was at Lockwood. So I'm running because I want to ensure that each student has the same opportunity that I had, each teacher feels supported and relieved in their classroom, each parent is heard and their issues acknowledged.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Next is Mr. Wade.
My name is Helen Wade. Last time, I answered the what's unique about you question and shared that I was a competitive figure state employee since teen. So you already know that. So the new thing is, myself and my daughter show American-style red horses, kind of like, so it's kind of weird, weird thing that I do, and it's a little bit different than what you might hear about other people. I have served on the board dedication now for nine years. It's been an honor and a privilege to do so. It's not easy work, but I do believe in the power of education. There is nothing more important to our community than cultivating an educated young population, and providing to them the true support and the true privileges that come with understanding and knowledge. Our teachers here at CPS are second to none. I would like to serve for three more years to continue the work that we need to do, to folks on equity, to continue to manage growth, to continue to manage cost of our funds, and to make sure that our teachers are compensated in a way that they deserve. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Shelley Phelan, and I'm also a member of C M N E A. I'm currently...
The books of the audience are really...
Is this working, or am I just in a tunnel of... I feel like I'm echoing. You don't hear me. Okay. I'm not hearing you. Even with Wardie was up here, I feel like I can hear her reverberate, so it's just maybe so not any comment. Let me start over. Good evening, my name is Shelley Phelan, I am a C M N E A member. I am currently a fifth grade teacher here at Taskin Feely Elementary School. The following question was sent ahead of time to our candidates, so they've had time to think this one through in advance. We will begin with our next candidate, Mr. Jonathan Sessions, then proceed to Mr. Seaman, Mr. Wade, and then to Mr. Horn. Here is your question, please. If you were to reach out to let families, individuals, senior citizens, educators, and other community members, how will you reach out to let families, individuals... Sorry, because then I just realized, I'm going to start over. Essentially...
Yeah, you can answer your question.
The question party answers the one.
Maybe we don't pick up.
The mic's on, the mic's on. Mic's on now.
Not mic.
Hello? Can you hear?
Yep.
You can't hear? Ooh! This is good. I'll try another one.
Okay, you can, yes, we are on. Thank you for being here.
I am going to.
So I'm going to rephrase and restart that question. How will you reach out to families, individuals, senior citizens, educators, and other community members, and how would you let them know what is happening in our school?
We're starting to leave this house. Can you hear me? It's still working. It cuts out like somebody's crying. So, reaching out is definitely a two-way street, from my perspective. And it starts with being available and being accessible. And, you know, early on, I tried things like office hours, and it was like, well, you only have these office hours, and I can't make it to those office hours, so I'm not available. Just call and reach, that's all it is. I'll meet with you whenever you need. For me, reaching out and communicating is one of those, those big picture, both ways of the street. And for me, that communication is definitely making sure that I'm available if a member of the community has concerns, whether that's, you know, like yesterday, someone calling me and asking me a question about busing. I seem to find that, there was a period of time when you Googled my name, the first thing that came up was possible cell phone, like it just auto filled up, and Google just handed it out to the world, and I thought, like, how can this be fair? But I always want to make sure that I'm accessible. Now, as far as getting the message out there, I think that that's definitely always a struggle, because no matter how many times you say something to the media, you say something to the community, and there's that old adage, like, the second you're getting tired of sharing that message out to folks, they're beginning to hear. It takes a, it takes a lot of work to make sure that we communicate to all of the people on that list, whether it is educators. One of the things that I recently realized just meeting with the C M N E A group is, I had talked to so many recruiters, I had talked to so many Kiwanis Clubs, there's not a member of the business community that didn't know about early college. The teachers told me, like, hey, we didn't know about this until we got an email. And I was surprised by that, but I recognize that I have had a lapse in communication. So it's something that I recognize that I need to work on.
So you use the same mediums that we use here, newspaper, cell phones, email, social media. You use those mediums, and then you realize at the end of the day that there's somebody out there who doesn't have social media, doesn't have a phone, doesn't use email, doesn't watch the news, doesn't read the newspaper, might not have a TV. So you take that person, because they are the most nominated there, and you make them the priority, and you go to them. So, like you said, you have office hours somewhere. You may have it at a coffee shop on the south side of the highway. You may have it right outside Hickman another day. You may have it right out here in another school another day. If a parent wants to come in and talk to you at some time, then you make sure, so what I do is, I even also would say, hey, I'd like to meet with you. You tell me when you're available, and I'll make sure my schedule fits you. In this community, we have a lot of single parents, we have two-parent households, that with parents maybe working two jobs, and it's difficult for them to get out and come find where you're at. You've got to go to them. That's where they're at. And honestly, that's probably where they're more comfortable at. You go to somebody's house, and you're sitting in their living room, and it's where they're comfortable with, they're more likely to actually tell you what their problems are, what they need addressed. And I would say, hey, come out here to this coffee shop where you don't really have to go and talk to me about your issues. So that's how you reach out.
Every person that communicates a little bit differently. You know, we actually recently have a survey response, or an app analysis done of the effectiveness of the communication of our district. And to my great surprise, it was reported that a vast majority of the people who received this CPS newsletter actually read it. It was not surprising to me that nobody watches CPS TV. So that's to say that there has to be multiple ways that we send a message out. I think this question might be a little bit less about responding to input, but more about getting the word out to those who may or may not know. Some think, I agree with everything that's been said here, it may be a bit repetitive to say, well, you know, the internet, social media, email, et cetera, that's always a good idea. But I also think that engaging community members in the decision-making process, seeking out input, is a wonderful way to engage the community, seniors, individuals, educators, asking for membership on committees, seeking partnerships with our workforce, seeking partnerships with our companies, and ensuring that the message of the importance of the public school system is shared with all of our stakeholders, in a manner in which they can really and truly participate.
For me, it's about being available and being accessible. You know, I agree with what everybody is saying up here. We've got to use multiple mediums to meet people where they are. You know, I have to rely on my wife to keep me in check, because it's up to me. I would be out at all times, all things, and I'd forget about my employer, and forget about my responsibilities. So really, it's about making sure that I keep my priorities in line, you know, making sure that I'm there for my family, and making sure that I'm there to take care of my job. But after that, you know, I'm signing up here to be a part, to serve our community. And once I sign up for that, I have to be available to our community and for our community. So whatever means, and it's going to take whatever means is necessary to get messages out, that's what I'm going to do. But I agree with Helen's as well, you know, it's about building partnerships and getting and conveying information before it becomes an issue about not receiving information. Another good quality way to do that, to get information out, is I've got a lot of networks, and I've got a lot of connections, just the businesses, just the relationships, and that's a great way to share information, you know. And so taking advantage of those networks, taking advantage of those individuals, to let people know what's going on in our community, let them know what's going on in our industry.
Thank you very much. Now, our next question, which will start with Mr. Seaman. When making district decisions, how will you make sure you are considering opinions other than those that are presented to you?
So the best way to take an opinion, I like what we just talked about, you have to go find those groups. So we were at the CEPF forum last night, we'll be at Race Matters in a few weeks, with the legal voters, and a few weeks after that. You can't just show up to those meetings and run from us, right? You have to be there when they have those Tuesday meetings, or those Thursday night meetings, or those once-in-one meetings, where you feel like maybe it's just home things, but the issues that are coming forth in those meetings are the ones that you're going to be seeing on the board the next one. That mom who's speaking about her child will be standing up on the board, give a public comment. So that's where you stand. Like I said, just getting out to the community, talking to people. Tell us the person behind your wall. If I got a kid that knows the school, right there at school with your kid, ask him how they're doing, ask them who their kid's teachers, you know, what grade are they at? Do you like that teacher? Do you like the principal? I have this issue. Do you have this issue as well? Well, let's talk about it. Let's figure it out right here at the line as we wait to have our conclusion going. Just communicate with people on a basic level, and how do you solve all that issue?
You know, not everybody comes to public company. Not everybody sends you emails, and not everybody posts their feelings and thoughts and feelings on social media. So in deciding policy for a district that is going to touch nineteen, twenty thousand lives, you'd have to consider the opinions that you don't hear orally, that you don't see, and that aren't presented to you or promoted to you. Every one of our kids is different. They have different needs, and the policies that we talk about and that we ultimately decide have a lasting and real impact on each and every one of those students, each and every one of our staff members, and each and every one of our professional employees. I do think that it's important to keep your eye on the bigger picture and understand that while a decision may be really, really good for one particular group of people, even so, you have to look at whether or not that decision will inure to the benefit of all of the people that we serve, not just one particular group or another. I will say, this morning at our board meeting, we specifically talked a bit about this. One of the initiatives that is being pursued at this point in time is to ensure that the decisions that we made in the past, and the decisions that we've made in the past, analyze through a lens of true equity. And it's positive that means it wasn't a district that's something that I think is incredibly important.
The other question was, when making district decisions, how will you make sure you are considering opinions other than those that are presented to you?
You know, we're talking about, we're talking about decisions that affect the livelihoods of our students, and of our educators, and our community. And we have a very diverse community, and so it's very, very important that I take my opinions and my advice and mitigate those, put those to the side, and listen to what people want and what they need, and bring those to the table. I think the purpose of the board is to be advocates, and in order to effectively be advocates, we have to have both open and honest conversations with all stakeholders. And so, again, that's all of our students, all of our educators, our community, our business partners, everybody. Everybody's going to have opinions, everybody's going to have ideas in which best operate, and to push forward our kids. And so it's important to listen to all of those, bring those to the table. Again, like I mentioned, the decisions that I would make will be guided by my faith and by my values, and ensuring to do what's best for all of our kids and all of our educators.
Helen's absolutely right. I've been on the other side of that podium at a board meeting, and it is incredibly intimidating. And so I know that it's not a place where we hear all the different opinions about something. And so specifically to the question of, like, how do we find different opinions, opinions other than our own, it's about counting on our board colleagues, because we are a diverse group of individuals with different circles of contacts in the community. We all have, you know, whether that's Mr. Cushing, or myself, or this way, I mean, right now, we all have a different group of, circle of friends, circle of people that you talk to. And so it's about listening to each other and hearing what we're all hearing from the community. So that is just even this morning, like, we were talking at the board about, this is what I'm hearing from the community. It's also about, like, providing opportunities for people to come forward. It's in different manners. I have a perfect example of that, you know, not just including going out and being out in the community, but things like world cafes. World cafes have been an overwhelming success, in my opinion, from the school district, to allow the community to come out and share, I mean, not very unintimidating, very low-pressure environment, share. These are our concerns, and this is the direction we feel the district needs to move towards. I also believe that moving forward with a new program we're using called Thought Exchange, where someone can sit in a room and, without even the intimidation of speaking directly in a circle or a small group, you can submit questions and then vote on them.
Thank you. We are good and important, okay. So this is going to be a two-part question, sorry, if you want to explain, if you want to give your key words, it'll be that one. The first question is, as an elected school board member, will you be willing to meet with the president of the teachers' representative group when requested? That's the first part. And then secondly, and I'm happy to repeat, should teachers be able to contact board members? So... My heart is broken. Okay, well, it's your job. All right, so let me answer the first question. There have been meetings requested in the past with respect to matters that are properly bargained at the table. I respect the decision the teachers have made in electing you to represent them. The reason for that decision is because that voices are strong when brought together and spoken in a unified way. I think that the Teachers Association has incredible representation to bargain matters that are properly before the bargaining table. I trust that they communicate well back to their members, and that the members' wishes, thoughts, and positions are communicated well through them. Having said that, there is lots more to communicate about than salaries and working conditions. And with respect to those matters that aren't monthly bargained, of course. It is really shorting such as the second part of that question, which was, should teachers be able to contact board members? I think your voters, so yes.
Really, what we're talking about are building relationships. At the end of the day, we're all humans, and we're all trying to work for the same common goal. And the best and highest that I can give for this is kind of what I do in my current career, you know? I work with other insurance companies, and they have their interests. My company has their interests. At the end of the day, we need to mutual benefit and work together. And so it's important to build relationships, work to have conversations, so that when we do come to partake or whatever the situation may be, we can still continue to have open and honest dialogue. And I think that's, I think that's the key. I think that's very, very important, to have open and honest dialogue with regards to all matters. Because at the end of the day, we all share the same vision, we all share the same goal, we all all agree to support our kids, our kids, and building relationships, supporting them. And absolutely, I welcome all the contact, and I will welcome y'all to anybody.
So answer the two-part question. Number two, that's really easy. Yes, and I've talked to teachers. So absolutely, board members should be available with teachers. Two, willingness to meet with the president. Kathy, I'd say that our meetings that we have as an admin team, our last one was thrown out, I think those are very helpful. I, as a board member, sit in on those meetings, and those are meetings that the president of the association has with the administrative cabinet, and there's a member of board leadership in those meetings that then reports back to the board, and I think that's great. I think it's important to understand that there are things that are, you know, as a part of the collective bargaining process, there are things that need to be discussed at the bargaining table. And it's important to recognize that when we have those conversations, you were describing, or whomever that may be in the future, the conversations that are bargained, they have the bargaining table, and then outside of that, I think it's completely okay to have a conversation with the board.
I'm going to be boring and agree with the other three candidates. This is absolutely yes on both fronts. It's my view that board members are here to represent teachers, students, and parents. So if you would like to have a conversation at any point in time, as I said, I'll reach out to you and say, hey, when are you available? I'll make sure my schedule fits.
Okay, this next question is very near and dear to my heart, okay? Make sure you jot down some notes. The city ranks forty-eighth in the nation in beginning teachers' pay. I'm not beginning teachers, well, stay with me. Columbia public schools are at the bottom of this comparable district. As a school board member, how will you advocate for all employee salaries while understanding the realities of our school budget?
You know, I'm not into the statistics budget, so there's my little asterisk, but here's what I think. I believe that it's utterly important that we provide the absolute best salaries and working conditions that we can for educators, without compromising any resources. You know, our mission, our vision is to be the best district in the state. I believe we can be the best district in the state and have the lowest salary, forty-eight percent salary, salary start salary. So, you know, that's one of the things that I'm committed to, committed to providing positive working environments for our educators. And at the end of the day, provide a positive working environment, including salaries for our educators, and our children directly from that, and that's what we're all here to do. all here to do.